Thank you all so much for joining our Durham County Board of Commissioners' regular session this Monday night, April 28th, 2025. I'll now bring this meeting to order, beginning with our public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the Board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. I'll now ask, oh, I was gonna ask Commissioner Jacobs, but she's still getting situated. Would you like to read the public, the land acknowledgement?
As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners' meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Catawba, Ino, Okinichi, Shakori, and Tuscarora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of Indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past, and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Vice Chair Dr. Lee, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dr. Lee. I'll now ask if there are any agenda adjustments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, second by Vice Chair Dr. Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's passed unanimously. Now pass it to Clerk Wallace for announcements.
Good evening. I'll read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. Do you know a high school student interested in getting paid to support the Durham community and our democracy? The Durham County Board of Elections is looking for student election assistance. For more information, check out the Student Election Assistance section of the Precinct Officials page on the website at dcovotes.com. The CIAA will host its annual track-and-field championship meet at Durham County Memorial Stadium, located at 750 Stadium Drive, on Friday, May 2nd, and Saturday, May 3rd. Gates open at 8:00 a.m. each day, with events starting at 9:00 a.m. For additional information, you can visit the CIA.com website. The 2025 Bull's Eye Awards was developed to honor organizations and persons who are making significant contributions to their community through their time, actions, talents, and dedication. The honorees selected should serve a role, as role models for compassion and service, and will be striving to make Durham a better place. To submit your nominations, there is a link, and nominations close May 2nd at 5:00 p.m. Renegade Apartments Downtown Durham, built for comfort, convenience, and value, is hosting a pre-leasing event on Thursday, May 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Durham Bottling Company, located at 506 Ramshire Street. For additional information, you can visit renegadedurham.com. The application fee is $25 per person. You must be 18 years or older. Bring a valid ID and money order along, or a cashier's check. First come, first served basis, and don't miss the opportunity to apply. You can learn more about Renegade at, I'm sorry, which is a part of 300-500 East Main Street redevelopment for Durham County, and there is a link on our dconc.gov page. The Durham County Veteran Services Department will hold its annual Memorial Day Remembrance Event on Monday, May 26th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Administrative 2 Building. Veteran Services wants to honor Gold Star families during the program, and invite families to email veteranservices@dconc.gov, or call 919-560-8387 to learn, to let them know that you are interested in attending. And lastly, the destination master plan was created with input from over 2,200 Durham residents, and community engagement is fundamental in ensuring the ongoing work of Durham Next. It lives up to its vision to create a welcoming, inclusive, innovative, and vibrant destination while honoring its history and people. Apply now to join the Durham Next Community Advisory Council by visiting durhamnext.org. That concludes the announced published in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. Are there any additional announcements? Commissioner Jacobs?
I have, I have several announcements. One is, I know she's going to get, be very mad at me, but I want to recognize our Veteran Services Department Director, I don't think she's here tonight, she may be listening, Lois Harvin Raven, who is going to be retiring at the end of this month. I want to lift her up because there is not going to be any big event for her, and I wanted to, and even though she doesn't want that, I really want to recognize her at this time. She has been the Director of Veteran Services since I've been the County Commissioner over the past, she's been our Director for 13 years, and so for, I've been here for 12-plus years, so I feel like I have served alongside Lois, and she has really, really basically created this department in Durham County Government. And since I have been a County Commissioner, there are, we have amazing staff. We have amazing staff, amazing department heads. There are certain people that their department is almost synonymous with who they are as a person, and I would say that really is who Lois is. Lois Harvin Raven, Director Raven, and her department, she has, over the years, built up that department, advocated to have more staff to serve the community, and she has also, if anyone has ever been to Durham County's annual celebration for Veterans Day, you will, you have experienced what Lois brings to this work. Her heart, she puts her heart and soul into it, and has, has made possible the most beautiful celebration for our veterans every year, Memorial Day Celebration, which is coming up, which Commissioner Valentine will be the speaker for, but the only reason that I'm glad that Lois is retiring is because she deserves it, and she, I worry about her health. She just literally puts so much of herself into this work. So Lois, I know you're gonna be mad at me, but I, I just, I'm so grateful to you for everything that you have given to yourself, for our community, for serving our veterans, and leaving an incredible legacy, and the staff. Another mark of, of some of our amazing directors, and also that I see in Lois, is her investing in her staff, and we have also incredible leaders under Lois, who I feel confident are going to continue her work in Veteran Services. Wonderful staff in Veteran Services Department, thanks again to Lois. So congratulations, and we will miss you, and we're really grateful to you. So sorry, I was long-winded about that. I just didn't want the, that to go by, since she is retiring in the end of this month. Yes, yes, go ahead. Commissioner, Lois is a gem, and I asked her at least three or four times, would you please let us honor you? She is the most tireless person when it comes to advocating for our residents, and other residents as well, who are not even in Durham. So we are going to do a resolution to formally honor her. We'll try to coordinate a time that she will show up, but either way, we'll have the resolution if she decides not to, but I appreciate your kind remarks, and they don't make many employees like Lois. Durham is better because of her.
And she was just appointed by the Governor to a commission, right?
Yes, that's right.
I don't remember which commission, but congratulations.
Veterans Affairs.
So congratulations to her on that.
Yes, thank you. I did want to, two other things. One, I know we have an agenda item related to this, but Banjos and Biscuits Festival this weekend was amazing for anyone who got to attend, and they had amazing free programming for people in our community. I am proud that Durham County Government supported this festival. I'm grateful that Rianna Giddens brought the festival to Durham. She could do this anywhere in the world. Grateful to the talent that we have here in Durham, Cecily Mitchell, and Tess Mangum, many other people who worked and made the festival actually happen and possible. Our local artists, like Reecey Palmer, Shayna Tucker, Charlotte Ammons, and others, we are, it was so wonderful to see downtown alive, our businesses getting supported, our hotels full, and, and it's an important, important festival, reclaiming the roots of the banjo music and the role of Black music, Black musicians in our history, and I just want to say, we need to find a way, as a community, to make sure that we support this, that Durham is the forever home of the, of the Biscuits and Banjo Festival, and that requires support. These festivals are very expensive, take a lot of work, and I hope that we will all be doing whatever we can, Sidney County Government and the broader community, to ensure this festival stays in Durham and continues to thrive. So, yes, I know, you were there too, Michelle.
Yeah, I was just gonna say something about that as well. It was a really phenomenal weekend with biscuits and banjos. Downtown was full of people celebrating African-American music and bluegrass and country music, and then you had the breakout sessions, where, and they were in various parts of downtown, at the Armory, at the American Tobacco. I walked around to listen to some of the folks talk about, you know, storytelling, things like that, and I just wanna echo, we must keep that here in Durham, figure out a way how we can continue to support this really great festival. And the music at Deepak, when Rianna Giddens in the chocolate, chocolate, the Carolina Chocolate Drops, it was out of this world. It was really great, so just wanna echo that.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm being so long-winded tonight, but I, yes, go ahead.
If I could just add on to that, if you missed the Biscuit and Banjo's event, our Deputy Clerk, Maceo Carlton, was there, and he will lead you through trainings of line dancing and square dancing, if you so desire.
Yes, the square dancing at the Armory was fantastic, and we need, and line dancing, we need to do that every month in Durham. The last thing is, I'm, will submit this report to our Board. I wanted to share that I attended the April 22nd meeting that was with North Carolina DHH Secretary Sangva- D H H Secretary Sangvai, that was hosted by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. There were county commissioners at the meeting from across the state and a lot of our Durham County staff. And they're, the message to us was that they need our help around Medicaid. We, we have an item on our agenda we'll hear more about related to Head Start, but I just want to share that, that they're asking people in our community to tell their stories, to contact Senator Budd, Senator Tillis, Representative Fushi, and share your stories about how Medicaid is helping you in your life or in whatever kind of work you're doing because it is under threat. It is real. And we have a third of the people in our state are now receiving their healthcare through Medicaid. And it would be catastrophic for, some of the things that are being proposed are, if they change the funding formula, it would really affect North Carolina because the 660,000 people who've just gotten it in the past year could be cut out immediately. Okay? And then they're also proposing a work certification, which would be an unfunded mandate on local government. And most people, we already know that they can't work or they're already working who are on Medicaid. If they're not, it's because they're disabled or they're children or they're seniors. And then the third issue is around recertifications. They are talking about changing that. Again, that would be an unfunded mandate, so there would be more than annual, even monthly, which of course doesn't make, that's, the cost would be astronomical again to local governments. So we really, the message we heard is we, people, our federal elected officials need to hear from people in our community. So call them, email them about this very important issue. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. I don't have an announcement, but I would just like to recognize that we are joined here today by the beautiful ladies of the Alpha Zeta Omega Chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Ladies, if you want to stand and be recognized for joining us today at our meeting. Y'all always brighten up a room with your pink and green when you show up. And we have our own AKA here with Manager Hager and Ms. Deborah Craig Ray. Do we have other AKAs on our staff? Probably, but, oh, there you go, from our library. We just wanted to recognize and thank you all so much for joining and we look forward to having a meeting with you soon. Are there any other announcements? Then I'll move to ceremonial items, beginning with Commissioner Valentine.
Yes, first, let me take a moment of personal privilege, Madam Chair, and thank Mr. James Chavis and Charleeta Burris, who are both co-facilitators of Partners Dance Crime in PAC One, District One and District Five. And so, thank you. I believe Mr. Chavis is here with us this evening. So proclamation, Disaster Preparedness Week 2025. Whereas Durham acknowledges that disasters affect people with the most vulnerable among us, typically bearing the greatest impacts from housing and food insecurity to financial hardships. And whereas Durham acknowledges that across the country, historic heat waves, flooding and fires have tragically, tragically, excuse me, claimed lives and impacted many. And whereas Durham knows disasters elsewhere can become disasters at our doorstep. And whereas Durham desires to promote, inform and empower residents about the possible dangers from natural disasters. And whereas Durham believes that an informed community is a prepared community, now therefore be it resolved, I, Nita Alom, Chair and on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim June 28th through July 4th, 2025 as Disaster Preparedness Week in Durham County, North Carolina, and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance and take time to prepare this 28th day of April, 2025. Signed, Nita Alom, Chair, Durham Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you so much. And we have Mr. Chavis and Charleeta Burris here.
Good afternoon. And I'd like to say thank you to the County Commissioners for this quick and fast going through this proclamation. The Durham County has the first one to take initiative, but they wasn't the first one we presented this to. I want you to know, you all was the last one. The Durham City was the first. We have not heard from them. The Durham School Board was the second and we have not heard from them. I presented this to them less than a month and here I am standing on a great opportunity for Durham as a whole. Each and every one of you in here are part of this proclamation because you in any way are disaster hit here in Durham. I question to you right now, are you ready? Do you know what you need, where you go, how you get there? Who's going to help if you can't get there? You see, I am disabled. I'm not the only disabled person. You just heard one of your councilway talking about disabled people. So I want you all to join in us on June, all you green out there, get your chance again to show your outfit on June the 28th from 11:30 to 12:30. We want to really kick this off as a great celebration for the city of Durham and Durham County and School Board. We're going to be on the sidewalk, we're not going to be on the street. And the one reason I'm not trying to block off the street, as you know, we have a fire station there and we cannot stop a fire truck from going where they want and we do not want no injury. So please, come out, you can be at the School Board, you can be at the County Commissioners place, you can be at the city of Durham. We want a whole surrounding area of Durhamites telling the other cities, counties and School Board members, this is what we need our money to be spent for. Some of y'all may not understand, Donald Trump has cut fever, very so. But as he said, call your representative because I'm going to tell you why. When he cut it, we have two representatives, one Democrat and one Republican. But guess what? Folks in Asheville, when he cut it, he had to go back and restore it so they can continue to get their money. Don't tell me Burris didn't have something to do with it. Don't tell me the Republican Party did not have something to do with to make sure that those people in Asheville area get the money that they were supposed to get for their disaster. Some of you may not be keeping up with it, but I am because I have family members that have lost where they had. It is 550 peoples up there right now, they cannot find home place or somewhere for them to lay their heads. Every last one of us here are blessed and highly favored that we have somewhere right now in Durham, North Carolina to lay our heads in peace. So please get involved.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chavis.
Good evening to everyone. First of all, we are blessed for the County Commissioners. Look here, I'm going to say this and say this real quick. I'm boots on the ground, I do a lot in the community. Some of y'all I've seen, some of you I haven't seen, and I have a problem with that. Because unless you're in our situation, unless you live where I live, unless you go what I go through, you'll never know how it feels. So this is very important to me and Mr. Chavis about disaster relief. You know, we can sit home and chill and look at TVs, get fat and all that kind of stuff, but what if a disaster come and a flood come to your house? The Bible say you got five wise and five foolish, which one you going to be? And it ain't about me, it's not about Mr. Chavis, it's about the love for people. I do what I do because I love people. I don't get a paycheck. I am a beautiful senior citizen. Yes, I said it. I'm a beautiful, marvellously made senior citizen. So if you live long enough, hopefully you'll get to be a senior citizen. If you don't die young, you're going to die old. So let's get it together in Durham, let's come together. Stop saying we love our city and there's no action behind it. That's all I say. If you really love something, guess what? You get behind it and do what's needed. And I understand protocol, I understand red tape and all that, but at the end of the day, remember you got families that you might have to save, including the pack. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Burris. Now pass it to Commissioner Burton for our next proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Durham Board of County Commissioners proclamation, 25th anniversary of the Durham Library Foundation Whereas in the year 2000, a dedicated group of citizens established the Durham Library Foundation, about to sneeze, to ensure the long-term financial health and continued growth of Durham County Library. And whereas in 2005, the foundation demonstrated its commitment to excellence by securing a $500,000 National Endowment for the Humanities Challenge Grant and successfully matching it with $1.5 million in private contributions significantly enhancing library resources. And whereas the Durham Library Foundation plays a vital role in supporting Durham County Library by raising funds and managing investments for capital projects, programs, collections and special initiatives, strengthening the library's ability to serve the community. And whereas recognizing that strong, well-funded libraries are essential to education, innovation and lifelong learning, the foundation continues to advocate for the resources necessary to provide diverse and accessible services to all residents of Durham County. And whereas 25 years after its incorporation as a nonprofit organization, the Durham Library Foundation reaffirms its founding vision of excellence by sustaining and expanding its financial support for the benefit of Durham County residents. Now therefore be it resolved, Nita Alom, Chair and on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim June 5th, 2025 as Durham Library Foundation Week in Durham County, North Carolina and encourage all residents to celebrate and express their gratitude for the foundation's unwavering dedication to enriching our libraries and our community this the 28th day of April, 2025. Nita Alom, Chair, Durham Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton, and we're joined by Sarah Stevens, Arthur Rogers, Cara Nunnally, Nunnally, and several members of our library board. Oh, you have to unmute.
Oh, yeah, there we go. So I'm Sarah Stevens, Development Officer for the library system and I work, I'm privileged to work alongside Durham Library Foundation. So this is such a joyous occasion to be here this evening and recognize what they do. I feel like I, I tell them, we tell them thank you so much, but it's wonderful to do it in a public forum. With me is, who is this? Cara Nunnally, she is the new Executive Director at Durham Library Foundation. Cara joined us in January of this year. This is Arthur Rogers, the President of our board, Carl Newman, board member, Dr. Desiree Palmer, board member, and Judith Ruderman, I said it right this time, another board member. I just want to express that Durham County Library is better and stronger because of the financial support from Durham Library Foundation. I've only been with Durham County, well, I've only worked alongside Durham Library Foundation seven of its 25 years, but in the seven years that I've worked with them, I've seen $2 million from capital projects, over $2 million from capital projects, countless other initiatives and library, excuse me, and library programs go right back into the community. Things like Campaign for Maine, when we were rebuilding Maine, the Library Foundation donated 1.2 million to us. Library Fest, which is the celebration of National Library Week, that was last week, week before last. If any of you all were able to attend any of those events, we hit a record number of attendance. They fund our humanities programs and the very popular seeds programs. So we're fortunate to have the support of such a dedicated group of volunteers that not only love their library, but they love their community. And this is such an important time to support your library. I don't think I have to emphasize that anymore. It is an important time to support your library, so please remember to support your library foundation. I'm going to see if Arthur wants to say anything.
I would just like to say one thing, it's a privilege to partner with the county on our library system. And as we announced at our, our gathering, we had to celebrate the 25th anniversary. We just got our largest gift ever from a retired librarian who, a Durham County Librarian who passed away, Rita Epstein. And she left almost 1.2 million dollars in her will, which is, we're putting to use with the library system. So it's very inspirational in this 25, in this 25th year. Thanks for your partnership.
Thank you all so much for your work. And I know the board members felt that they could hide in the audience and not be pushed, but I texted Carl, I was like, get your butt up there, especially today as we celebrated our appreciation of all of our volunteers across Durham County who step up and serve on our boards and commissions. So I wanted to make sure that y'all get recognized for the leadership and work that you bring to our board as well. Thank you all so much for all the work you do. Our library, like our public schools, is one of the spaces that touches the most residents. So we're so grateful to you and I'm sure we have, our other commissioners have comments, especially Commissioner Burton, our resident librarian.
Thank you, Chair Alom. Yes, I would be remiss not to make a comment about the library because libraries change lives and I believe that wholeheartedly. And I just want to say thank you for this foundation, for all the things that you do to enrich the cultural experience of the Durham County Library and making things possible. You know, I go to a lot of events at the library, so you have a fan in me, you can always call on me whenever needed. And so, thank you from the bottom of my heart and let's keep doing it. Yeah.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes, I just wanted to thank all of you for your service to our community and the really vital role that the foundation plays in supporting the librarians and a lot of their programming. We have really creative, brilliant librarians who have things that they want to do and you really help make that possible. And also the, the financial support for things like the furnishings that you provided for Maine Library and also support for Sanford L. Warren Library as well. As you reference, Sarah, the libraries are under threat, not only around issues with, you know, banning books, but also around funding. I was trying to pull up the, I guess the executive order on March 14th that threatens the future of the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So again, when we talk about the impact to us here at the local level, unfortunately, we are going to see that impact with our museums like the Museum of Life and Science, like our own libraries here in Durham that really rely on these, this federal grant funding. And I know that the foundation will become even more important over the next few years as we try to fill the gap locally. And that's what we're going to do here in Durham. The Paulie Murray Center recently had a $330,000 grant rescinded. So we are going to fight in Durham to protect what we have and to make sure we keep educating, providing equitable access to education and cultural resources. And so again, we really are grateful to all of you for being a part of this fight in the years ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes. First, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Chaves. I didn't get an opportunity to make comments. I put my head down and we moved on. But thank you for keeping disaster preparedness in our collective consciousness. Library Foundation, thank you for what you do. You play a big part in ensuring that our libraries are the very best. And it's not lost on me that the data shows that the libraries are our most valued resource in this community. It shows it repeatedly. And I want you to know that yes, these are difficult times, but that the board, I hope they join me in this, I stand with you and the foundation in supporting our libraries moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate your service. That brings us now, we have our minutes to approve for the April 7, 2025 work session and the April 14 regular session. Do I hear any adjustments or questions regarding the minutes? Or I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
A move by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner, by Chair Dr. Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have approved the minutes unanimously. Now to consent agenda. Are there, are there any items commissioners would like to pull? Commissioner Jacobs?
I don't want to pull anything. I do want to give the last item on our consent agenda related to the letter regarding Head Start funding to give Terry David, our Head Start Director here, a chance to talk about that. Maytal Barak, our Early Childhood Coordinator, a chance to also put that into context. I just want to make sure we give them the chance to talk about this issue. And also, I just had a question related to the first item about our Green Source Advantage Program. I know it was described in the item that this would be able to cover 70% of Durham County Government's energy costs. Could you just talk about that a little bit and also related to our 2030 and 2050 goals?
Yes, thank you very much and good evening. I'm Tobin Fried. I'm the Sustainability Manager for Durham County. And just to clarify, that was 70% of the electricity use, not the cost and not the energy, because of course we are still using natural gas and gasoline and diesel in our vehicles. So that, all of that makes up our profile for energy use. But as far as electricity, now that's based off of 2020 numbers, because that was back when we started this program. So we are working very hard with the General Services Department in particular, as well as other departments, to reduce our energy use. So even as our footprint grows and we're getting more buildings and more facilities that we are working on bringing our total energy use down. And then we do have goals that were adopted by the board to have 80% of that total energy portfolio for the county operations be renewable energy by 2030, which is only five years away, and 100% by 2050. And so when this solar field comes online in 2027, it's really going to take us a big jump towards those 2030 goals. However, we still won't get there without doing other things. So I know that we've been adding more electric vehicles to our fleet, and our new youth home has geothermal as well as solar on it. I know we just put solar on our Board of Elections building. So we are making progress. We will be coming to the board with a more proposal for how to, how to continue to move forward to that goal.
Thank you.
And we'll come back to the second item. We'll come back to that once we approve the consent agenda. But Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I just want, I don't want it pulled, but I just want to mention item 25-0194 about the money being appropriated from the North Carolina Public School Lottery Fund, $2 million to Durham Public Schools, eight Durham County Public Schools. And I just want to highlight that because a lot of times residents are wondering, well, where is this lottery money? What's being happening, what's happening with it? And that is what it's being used for. It's being used for very important capital projects that are needed for our schools to repair the playgrounds. And so I'm really grateful that we're getting this money to help repair our schools because it's much needed. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Any items? I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Jacobs, I think, second by Commissioner Valentine?
That's correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent is approved. I'll now bring up the Durham Pre-K and Head Start team. If you guys want to come to this left podium. And Maytal? You want to come to this podium? Yeah.
Good evening. We are here to show our support for our Head Start programs. As you know, our funding, both nationally and at the state level, is at risk at this moment. And I am honored to be joined by Terry David, who is the President of the North Carolina Head Start Association. We presented a letter for your consideration to advocate with Congress to ensure that we don't lose this pillar in our community and in our state. Happy to answer questions and I don't know if Mr. David wanted to speak.
I just wanted to first say thank you for just considering this. I think this is really important to our community. Many people don't know that in Durham alone, we receive about $16 million from the Office of Head Start to serve children and families. And there are two programs. We talk about Head Start, where we serve children three to five. But there's early Head Start, where we serve children, pregnant moms and children from ages birth up to three years old. And so it would be a big hit to our community. And I also, one big point I just wanted to talk about too, is the economic impact. Of course childcare, but many single moms are not able to go to work without childcare. And so, and thinking about what we do in providing comprehensive services to both children and families. And I say children and families because we're working with moms and dads, right? While their children are enrolled and fatherhood programs where we're, there's empirical evidence that suggests children are better off when there's a father, a father figure in their lives. And so we're trying to, you know, continue to work and do the great work that we do. And, you know, a lot of times people ask about the data. And I like to remind people, and I say for myself, I'm the data point. As a kid, I went to Head Start. I'm one of 17 children. I grew up and experienced poverty. But the program did its job in that it started in 1965. It's ironic that we celebrate 60 years in May for Head Start, but in, was an anti-poverty program. So we're hoping that we are able to help families to be better. And they did that in my case. So I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
One more thing I wanted to just remind us as well is this is a pre-birth through five-year-old program that supports our community. And also it is one of our key stakeholder partners in our Durham Pre-K program with our Head Start classrooms as well.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, thank you, Terry, for the work that you're doing, not just here in Durham, but throughout the state. I want to emphasize that, again, like Medicaid, this is, this is a real crisis right now. And again, we need people to contact Senator Budd, Senator Tillis, Representative Fushi, because the federal government is literally considering ending this program.
And the.
It's, it's, it's hard to believe, but that, this is a program that serves our children, our most vulnerable families. And we have 490 children in Durham who attend Head Start programs. And this is a big priority for Durham County Government. We have Linda Chappell and some of her team here from early years, who is our partner implementing our Durham Pre-K program. We've been investing, I think this year it's over $8 million in this program, and Head Start is a part of this program. We know that this is the, it is data-driven, effective, most effective way for us to help children be able to learn and start school-ready to learn their brain development. This is how we give everyone a fair chance in our country to succeed in life. And it's, so we need everyone to please stand up and help support this program. And I just wanted to say the letter, if we, I just have a request. The, the sample letter we have is addressed to our North Carolina delegation. If we could also have it sent to our Senator Tillis, Senator Budd, and Representative Fushi, and to make sure that our Durham County letterhead is on it with our picture and all of our signatures from our entire board with our electronic signatures. This is very important. Thank you. And thank you for your help with doing this, pulling this letter together and for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your work. You know, the Head Start program really services our most vulnerable community members, our children. So really grateful to the work that you all are doing. And I'm glad that our board unanimously stood and supported this letter because it's so vital for us to continue receiving this so that 490 Durham youth and children would lose access if this funding is cut. So we need to make sure and advocate and have our representatives hear from us, but also from community members about how vital Head Start program funding is. And now I'll pass it to our Attorney Williamson for Boards and Commissions.
Good evening. I'm actually going to start with the Community Child Protection Child Futility Prevention Team. There's one vacant position, and the board has selected Andrea Couch for that position. We have two vacant positions with the City County Appearance Commission. And here we actually have one that was selected by the majority of the board, Nia Furtick, and we have a tie for two of the other people that have been nominated. So the board has the option of doing another vote. We have reprinted the ballots if you want to do that tonight, or you could do another vote at another meeting. So that's entirely up to you.
Will we, no, on the ballots doesn't note the two that were finalists of, or it's just a fresh?
It'll be a fresh vote. We've taken off the person who already has the majority vote. So we didn't want to influence your decision when you revote.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Let's do it tonight.
Let's do it tonight? Okay. I'm good with that? Do we have one more that's good with doing it tonight?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll pass out that now. Okay, that was pretty easy. The second position goes to, the board has selected Israful Brandon for the City County Appearance Commission. So that means that we have Nia Furtick and Israful Brandon for that commission. Congratulations to both.
Congratulations for service. For those folks who have applied and didn't get selected, I encourage you to continue looking at Boards and Commissions. We just had our amazing appreciation event of all of our boards, and it was a very diverse representation of our community and all the different ways you can come up and serve our community. Those are listed on the Durham County Boards and Commissions website. And they're also offering, the county now offers a stipend to make serving on a board and commission more accessible to our residents. But that, that now brings us to our closed session. And the board is requested to adjourn into closed sessions for economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A4. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
A move by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you so much for attending our meeting. You can stick around, or you can go home.
The Board of Commissioners met in closed session, no action was taken, direction was given to staff. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, seconded by Commissioner Valentine, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We adjourn, Commissioner Valentine did you?
I just wanted to wish our colleague a happy birthday on the record. Commissioner Burton, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Today your birthday?
Oh my goodness.
Oh my gosh. I'm sorry, you're like three days after me. Yeah. My birthday is April 20th. I turned 39. You can look at the pictures and see my birthday cake on 39.
Happy birthday to you. So there's three April birthdays.
That means you turn 30 at least.
April 9th, yeah.